Pleased to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of New Mexico and the symbol of our friendship among the united cultures.
Mr. Pruitt, would you please lead us?
Our dear heaven Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to meet here today and for this beautiful day that we have. We ask Father that you will give the commissioners a sermon on the decisions that they make for the citizens and employees for Eddie County. We ask Father that you watch over our law enforcement and our personnel, keep them safe. We pray for our great nation. And we send you God's blessings.
Before we move into public comment, I'm just gonna let everybody know that Commissioner Cordova is here, she is present on via phone. She's sick, so she's not here physically with us today, but she is here on the phone. So with that, we will move into public comments.
Norbert Rempel, 45-year resident of Eddie County. If drug gangs or terrorist groups that already killed hundreds or thousands of innocent human beings elsewhere threatened to expand into Eddie County, should we not expect our representatives, legal system, and law enforcement to do everything in their power to keep them out? That is what Texas did a few years ago, and their preventive actions stopped all elective prenatal homicides. Our eastern New Mexico neighbors followed suit with the same positive result. But professional assassins have not yet given up on expanding their lucrative bloody business. Therefore, Texas is now suing a New York abortionist who mails child execution drugs to Texas residents in direct violation of Texas and federal laws. I'll give you a copy of the lawsuit when I'm done. The ordinances that New Mexico communities east of us have enacted to mandate compliance with all federal laws, including those that prohibit mailing and receiving abortion-related items. Unless Eddie County enacts a similar ordinance, children in our county will be utterly defenseless in the face of imminent extermination. It is way past time to resist King Harold's Santa Fe deputies who aim to force us into accepting and embracing child murder. Any commissioner who does not act now to protect the lives of our prenatal fellow human beings does not belong on this commission. Merry Christmas.
Seeing none, we'll move into service awards. All right, first we have Cynthia Norman, 15 years with the Detention Center. We have Michelle Shaw, 10 years with the Detention Center. We also have Alicia Moreno, 10 years with the Detention Center.
Sir, it's Alicia.
I am sorry.
Thank you.
Barbara Mount, five years with the Detention Center. We also have Jenna Heff, five years with the Detention Center. Next, we have Hazer Archer, five years Public Works. We also have a few retirement presentations. First, we have Commissioner John Henry, District Two, eight years. We have Lori Pruitt, the elected treasurer, eight years. And Mark F., Sheriff, eight years. Okay, then if everybody would stick around until after, we will do the photo op and the...
Two more items.
So we will move into the trailing agenda now. We have the presentation of the first place float award in the Artesia Lightup Parade to Eddie County Public Works by Artesia Main Street Executive Director, Mordus Fox.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
So I wanted to come to our commission and present an award to Eddie County Public Works. Not only did they do a fantastic job at our trick-or-treat Main Street event in Artesia, there are candied apples, a whole bucket full of candy, but their float was amazing. The theme was traditional New Mexico Christmas, and they made a whole little casita on their trailer. So it was amazing, great job.
Come on, you guys. Next item, we have the Chevron donation to Eddie County, Chief Mac.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners.
Today we've got Chevron Beverly Allen, Jason, and I'm gonna butcher the name.
Roseanne.
And then Stephen Seidler. And they are with you on emergency management for Chevron out of Midland, right? Beverly is local to us, but...
So they gave $50,000 to emergency management and $5,000 to fire and rescue to help with different projects and operations, so they're here to present the check this morning. So we'll do that out there and take a photo.
Awesome.
And just FYI, what we will be using part of the money for is OEM is partnering with the Charles Bette Schools and working on a reunification exercise and training.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, that's great.
Just as Chevron partners, we're proud to partner with you guys and support the emergency preparedness process, and so we look forward to supporting in any way we can. Thank you guys.
Thank you guys very much. We're fortunate to have you guys.
Thank you. Cannot say enough about these two. I have them both on speed dial, I can't tell them how many times I call them throughout the year, or these call them, we just depend on them so much. They help us operate in the community, make the money for the county, and they are just vital to us. So I just want to give them a shout-out.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you guys. Okay, so now we'll move to the lobby for a short break for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rolled it into that.
Oh, that's all.
Yeah, that was good. Item number three on the agenda, we have a donation from Mewburn Oil Company to Eddie County Fire and Rescue. Chief Mac?
Sorry, I can't read.
Okay, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, so we had two tank battery fires off an old cavern. They were both Mewburn locations. They've always been a good supporter of us, and this was their reimbursement for the foam usage that we had to help us out with operational costs, so we're always appreciative of them. And obviously, we were able to reduce damage to their tank batteries, so they were very thankful. They actually had onsite cameras, so we got a lot of feedback on how quick we were and how attentive our guys were to caring for their equipment and property, so...
Great.
...get out from...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, guys.
November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
And Carlson?
Yes.
Next item is approve the commission meeting minutes for December third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Upstain?
Uh, Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is a resolution supporting the deportation of illegal criminal aliens in cooperation with federal law enforcement. Resolution R dash twenty-four dash one fifteen. This resolution is showing Eddy County's support of the incoming administration, their efforts to deport illegal immigrants that have come in and done illegal acts. Eddy County had seventy-seven percent of the residents that voted in the past election that supported the incoming administration. So we feel like the county shows solid support of the incoming administration and their ideas. Also, since the abolishment of Title forty-two, fentanyl seizures have been up by three hundred and fifty percent. So over the last three years, that number is staggering. So this resolution, again, is showing Eddy County's support for the incoming administration and their efforts to secure the border. Is there anything that anybody would like to add to that?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Can I vote twice, just this one? Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, R dash twenty-four dash one twenty. A resolution setting elected official pay for Eddy County elected officials and adjusting the current compensation plan, R dash twenty-three dash forty-four, to remove the percentage by which chief deputy officer pay is based on elected official pay. Andrew McCutcheon?
Yes, um, as you know, we recently passed Amendment four when the, uh, at the November election, and that took away the legislature's authority to set salaries for county employees. Before that, it was controlled by the legislature. And frankly, the general public said, we would like the county commission to have that, have that authority. There has been, the only, uh, time that an elected official's pay can be changed is when they are first taking office. So, none of this would apply to, uh, sitting commissioners or other elected officials, uh, assessor that were not elected this time. This resolution only applies to, uh, three new commissioners. Or this, uh, Amendment number four applies in our county to three new commissioners, applies to the treasurer and applies to the sheriff. So they're the only ones really on this, on this, uh, resolution. The other thing we did with this resolution is, and we're suggesting, is that there's a, uh, in the, in the nineteen ninety-six compensation plan of the, of Eddy County, there's a, uh, an item that says that the treasurer would be ninety-five percent, that, that, the deputy treasurer, for example, would be ninety-five percent of the treasurer. And my recommendation, and this is a little bit of a sidebar to the county, uh, to the administration and to the new county manager, would be that we need to look at the salaries across the board in Eddy County, because I think things have changed pretty significantly. And so that would be something that I would suggest that you guys do going forward. And at that time, I think you would look at those deputies. Now, back to the issue at hand. We receive emails, uh, on a regular basis that show us what other counties in Eddy or in New Mexico are doing. And we've probably received many, many emails on what other counties are doing. And frankly, it's all over the board. We have one county, um, up north, that is, their county elected officials, their county commissioners are considering a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year salary. We have some commissions that, um, have actually said, we're gonna pay our people less than what the state was paying. Other have, others have taken the time from twenty nineteen, when this was adjusted, and put COLA going forward. Some have said, we're gonna do a fifteen percent across-the-board raise. Some have said, we're gonna do a thirty percent across-the-board pay, across-the-board raise. So, the, the response to this in the state has been all over the place and very difficult to interpret and come up with anything that was logical. So what we did is we said simply that San Juan County and Lee County are the closest counties to Eddy County in the state. And really, the rest of them don't have any oil and gas, they don't have a lot of resources. And their financial picture, their structure is completely different. And we think we are most, we are closest to both of those, both of those two counties. So, you know, simple minds have simple solutions, so what we would put before you today for your consideration is an average of those two counties. And, and, and those numbers are disclosed in the resolution. And, uh, we simply took the pay that, that Lee is gonna give their commissioners, uh, the pay that San Juan is gonna give their commissioners, and we averaged it. And we did the same with the sheriff, and we, we did the same with the treasurer. And, uh, it seemed to be a, a logical approach and something that perhaps, um, we could ask the commission to consider. We have to do something on this pay, kind of in a box. And this, this resolution can be amended if it's not the will of the commission. But, uh, excuse me, but we have to do something today or we will miss the opportunity for these elected officials that are coming on. So we're, we've kind of put it off till the last minute. There are still emails floating around from counties, uh, getting information. And everybody's grappling with the same situation in the last hours of the, of the year. So for your consideration, we put this, we put this forward.
Thank you for the explanation, how we got here. Um, anybody have anything they'd like to add or questions on it?
I've got a couple things, I guess, real quick. Can we, just to be clear, explain exactly who, what everyone is getting, what is in this resolution, so the public can hear, um, the exact numbers?
So currently, the elected treasurer's current pay is seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. The proposed new pay is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. We arrived at that number by taking the average of Lee County and San Juan, where it was set at one fifty in Lee County and one fifteen in San Juan.
Chairman, I think that's, I'm sorry, that's one forty-three.
One forty-three in Lee County and one fifteen in San Juan.
Yes.
Then for the commission pay for the three incoming commissioners, current pay is twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Proposed change to forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. You compare, um, Lee County on that one, uh, fifty-five thousand, or sorry, San Juan County's fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty, Lee County's thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. And then for the sheriff pay, the current elected sheriff pay is seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents. Proposed change to one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. San Juan County has set their sheriff at one hundred and fifty thousand, Lee County has set their sheriff at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fif- one hundred and fifty-seven, six hundred and fifty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Absolutely.
As you consider this, and, and I know that the elected officials, uh, by and large, signed up and didn't even know that they were gonna get a, a stipend. They just didn't know it. They just signed up to serve. And, uh, but I, I will tell you that the volumes going on in Eddy County are seven or eight times, just based on the, the, the amount of cash we manage, the taxes, the, the projects that we manage, and those all fall on the commission. And the commission, um, I guarantee you, and I think maybe John could back me up on this. I think if you look at the load that a commissioner now carries, based on what a commissioner used to carry, I think you will find it exponentially high. So I personally don't begrudge, um, some compensation. There's times you guys go to dinner, you drive to Artesia, you drive down here, you don't, you don't get reimbursed for a lot of the things you do. So, the commission, um, increase to me seemed very reasonable. As, as we looked at, uh, law enforcement as an example, we looked at what police chiefs are getting, we looked at what other counties were doing. We looked at Hector County, we looked at, uh, we looked at, uh, at Midland County, what their sheriffs were making. And for the sheriff, uh, deal, I think that number is very defensible, and that's very much the market for the sheriff. For the, for the treasurer, you know, the treasurer used to manage a hundred million in dollars. Our treasurer now manages about, uh, seven hundred, a little over seven hundred million in, in capital. So things have changed in the, in the county. Plus, when you add inflation to that, um, we need a, a living wage to sustain our county and to sustain our county officials. And so, that would be my, my thoughts on it. I don't, I know these numbers look rather large, and we think, oh, you know, where are we going with all this? But the truth of the matter, given the market and given what's going on, these numbers are not unreasonable at all, in my opinion.
A couple other quick questions I had. Last time we did this, uh, granted, I understand that the state dictated kind of the three percent raise. I fully agreed with the clerks, the treasurers, the assessors, the sheriffs, because those are full-time type jobs y'all get quite often. And that's why the commissioners' pay is so much lower. And at that time, I advocated not to raise the commission pay, which we didn't, we just raised the other elected official's pay. I think what you said is absolutely correct. I mean, raising the commissioner pay, my fear has always been, is you raise, you raise elected official pay so much, everybody wants to become one just for pay.
Yeah.
So I would hate to do that.
Yeah.
But I do think with the jobs that y'all carry, the pay has to be a living wage, because you, you do it every day. So, I understand in this resolution, we're only doing the three commissioners, the treasurer and the sheriff. Why would we not want to go ahead and at least put in place maybe, because at that time, we did, the clerk, even though they weren't up for election at that time, but go ahead and get the clerk at least set in motion, the other two commissioners at least set in motion. So it doesn't look like next time that, you know, if Bo runs again, or whoever's coming into Ernie's seat, that they're trying to give themselves a raise. Does that make sense? Like, go ahead and set all five commissioners now, go ahead and get the clerks in motion, because it's not in this current one, and the assessor. Am I missing something?
No, you can do that.
Is there a reason we did it?
We just, we just can't pay it until there's a new elected person.
But you can set all of them right now.
We should.
And that way, at least then it's done, um, a- and, and as y'all are moving forward, we're not having to rehash this in two, three years, two years, I guess. Just to get y'all, we're y'all gonna need to be anyways, and, and well deserved. I mean, uh, what you said is absolutely correct. With the amount that Eddy County is pushing through here, um, you know, the way the clerk runs the elections, I, I would say we have the, one of the best clerks' offices in the state of New Mexico. The assessor's office has gotta be one of the busier assessor's offices in the state of New Mexico. I mean, all of these are very well justified, I have no issues with it. I would just rather get it, at least put in somewhat of a place. And I would advocate, you know, just kind of what we did last time, do we put the treasurer, the clerk and the assessors in the same, at least scale at the moment. And if something changes, y'all wanna change it later, that's, that's up to y'all. But I would rather at least get it in motion so that it doesn't, it doesn't feel like we're just picking and choosing, and the public can under, the public's not gonna understand this anyways, we learned that in Artesia. They all think I make a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, which was never even on the docket, so it's confusing. The public's not.
I thought you did.
Yeah. My wife is here today, she can back it up. She's getting it, not telling me. We yet to see that. They're not gonna necessarily understand, so we've gotta do a great job of helping them understand, okay, look, it's only for the folks that are coming in. It won't be, oh, it won't be Ernie, it won't be, it, it, just whomever is reelected in these, these are those new salaries. So, um, it'll be up to us to make sure the public understands how that works, because there will be a lot of confusion. But she'll do a great job of communicating that. That's what I would advocate, uh, personally, is just let's clean it up the best we can today. But I don't wanna throw a, a problem in the middle of it all either.
Make sense to me?
I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do, we could, we could, I mean, we could amend the resolution. We could amend the resolution and go forward.
Okay, Chairman.
I think I would agree with that. I think, uh, Commissioner Henry commented on target. I don't think we should have to deal with this down with other, we can just get it done today.
If you wanna make the motion of ending that, then.
So if there's no further comments, yeah, I would make the motion to approve the resolution consent agenda with the changes of also adding the, uh, clerk's off, or the clerk, as well as the assessor. I guess at the pay of it's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, twenty-nine, yeah.
So you, that would cover the treasurer, the clerk, the assessor, the sheriff, that, not a hundred and twenty-nine, at the proposed hundred and fifty-three. So I'm not changing anything else in the resolution, I'm just adding the clerk's office and the assessor.
And then we would need to add the other.
Oh, and the other, the other two commissioners.
And I second that motion.
District four?
District four and district.
District one.
One.
And I second that motion.
That resolution makes sense?
Okay. We have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Move into item number seven, the budget, budget adjustment for Eddy County Shooting Range Bathroom Project. Mr. Burns?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, just a quick deal this morning. So we've currently got our, uh, Eddy County Shooting Range Bathroom Project undergoing. This is the project that we were awarded, the, uh, Recreation and Quality of Life Grant this last year.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Sorry. With that, as we're progressing through this, um, what we found is we need to upgrade the water line out from the road, um, with the Cottonwood Water Service, and we're having to extend the septic a little bit, get it out of the parking, and a few of the compliance issues with this as a federal grant, so, um, this should get us through the end of it, and we're anticipating this will be done about March of, we're about March this year, so it'll, uh, we're moving this right along. So this will help us get right through the finish line and comply and get it done right.
Questions? Look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment for Eddy County Shooting Range Bathroom Project.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
If we could, I would actually like to go back to item number six, R dash twenty-four dash one twenty, and if we could also add a probate judge.
Mr. Chairman, could I comment on that? If you could, if you could hold on that, that is a part-time position, not a full-time position. And if we could, uh, do some review on that and bring it back to you first meeting in January, we can fix that at that time, if that works. I'm just not sure that that fits the same, uh, category as, uh, the clerk and assessor and treasurer.
Okay.
That's okay.
They're not on this election cycle, so that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Just didn't wanna miss out on it.
Yes, Adrian, keep that in the, in the mix, we'll, we'll get that done.
So we'll go back to item number eight, the resolution and agreement consent agenda. Is there any items that anybody would like to pull for further discussion?
I have none.
Seeing none, I'll move to seek a motion approving the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Item number nine, the travel request consent agenda. Any items to remove for further discussions, questions? I'll look for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
We do not have any emergency business. I don't believe we have any legislative comments, announcements or updates. We'll move to elected official department head comments. Okay?
I would just like to thank you guys, we appreciate it, as elected officials. There's some counties that don't have the support of the commissioners, and that's not the case in any county, so we appreciate you very much.
We've seen what you do, we know that you earn it.
We can't let's get out of this item without a loose end, but then, I'll be the one to pull the bit. Um, just a quick project update on everything we're working on. You know, the detention center, we had a, a good final review meeting on conceptual design, we've been working with Billy and Trent, I think we've got a really good layout um, for that. We've, uh, taken the direction, we, we've started looking at adding ASU, DWI per year direction. This, this is moving along really good. So we've moved them into schematic design, we've also started reviewing an RFP to advertise for construction. So we're, we're, we're walking through this, we're reviewing that with finance now, trying to get that worded the way that it'll work for us, kind of in the, notion that we wanted, which is, you know, we work with the contractor, with the architect, and avoid a bunch of the headbutting problems we get to during construction. So we're stepping through that, that's moving good. We've cleared the site, everyone saw that, was our public works crews that was out there working on the site, it looks really good, it's cleared off. We're gonna do our best to plant some grass, keep that water down, so we don't dust out the sheriff in the spring with our gentle breezes that we get around here. We're hoping to have, uh, equipment on-site here, May-June, and start excavating, over-excavating, doing some sub-prep, so that we could come in here probably about August, September and start looking at doing excavation for concrete. It's kind of our timeline, by the time we walk through an RFP, get some people on-site. So we're, we're steady on, we're moving this steady forward.
And just to mention, Mr. Burns, you're gonna be bringing back some more final, um, numbers to the commission, uh, after the first of the year. When we get the new commission seated and the new county manager.
Yes, sir, very much so. That was, we'll move into that, um. With, with the directions we were given in the votes, we're gonna, with the direction of Mr. Berta, we're gonna bring back some final numbers and some adjustments, the final, not necessarily budget adjustments, but where numbers need to be to be approved, now that it's not going on the complex, it's staying here, some of the ands and ifs that went along with that, you know, particularly some of the facilities building that was gonna go out there and now gonna stay here, you know, the OEM building that, you know, was technically part of that, that we have some plans for there. So we're gonna bring all that back, probably about the first of the year, um, first, second meeting of the year, for some direction and discussion, so that we can get all that voted on and, and take care of it and move it forward. We have had discussions with our architects, we actually did complete the geotech right out here, uh, the week of Thanksgiving for the admin building. So we are moving forward with it, but we'll go ahead and bring that back for discussion and numbers, and then some better estimates. Road projects have completed for the year, Longhorn was complete, the bridge was done, that one's actually working really well, we've had a lot of good comments out there, they're moving along fast and furious, so it's a, we, uh, fix the roads and get them down the road, it's a, it's a
Yeah.
rock and a hard place that'd be. So, um, we'll be moving back to Currycomb and Buckskin and a few of those other roads in the spring. We also have a pretty extensive list of what we're gonna be maintenance in Fox Hill coming up in spring, so. As always, lots going on, lots of moving pieces. Also, at the landfill, we completed cell six, so that is now done, we're waiting on the NBD to certify that, and we'll start putting a fluff layer down on that. So, um, we talked about the Artesia Shooting Range, that's complete, they're building some fence up there, we're actually about to start on the tactical range for the sheriff. So, lots going on, lots moving forward, but as always, it is moving forward, so. Sorry, I didn't wear a red coat and hat, come up here and ho, ho, ho. As close as I can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
So against my better judgment, good morning, I will address you one last time, as an elected official. First and foremost, uh, thank you, we worked very hard, uh, a few of us, and then, and then another larger group to get the constitutional amendment passed. I can tell you that being on the executive board of the National Sheriff's Association, it was actually embarrassing to hear the salaries of the other sheriffs across the nation, uh, and when compared to what I was being paid. So I'm, I'm very grateful that Sheriff-elect Hutchinson is gonna benefit from this. It's, 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 it's earned and it's deserved. And as well as the other electeds in, in, in the county, that's, this is very important, because this was a hard-fought battle. And I also wanna point out that there are other commissions, as was pointed out earlier, but I wanna emphasize it, that are not doing what y'all are doing. I know several county electeds across the state that make less than what the state was allowing them to be paid, which is disgusting. So, and I also understand the, the, uh, concerns of paying electeds a little more, because you might encourage people to do it for the wrong reason. But I think that that is the voter's choice. It comes down to that, it's the voter's choice. And they will decide who the best people are to be elected to the, the positions of leadership in this county, or representation in this county. So I, I commend y'all for that, I, I, the, the numbers make me very happy, I'm glad to see that. I think that this should have been done a long time ago. This was something we came up with this time around at New Mexico Counties. And I have to credit, uh, Clerk Catherine Clark, uh, from Santa Fe County, she and I are polar opposites uh, on the, the political spectrum, right? But we're friends, and that's what happens when you get bipartisan cooperation. And when people work together, we get things done like this. So thank you all again for that. The, uh, I, I have to talk about Manning. We're not gonna, but we're doing great again. Uh, we're, we really are doing well, and we're focusing right now, uh, Sheriff-elect and I are focusing on the drug task force. We're focusing on our K-9 program, because that is the nucleus of, of, of how, that, that, that's our core. That's where we are helping eradicate the drugs that are coming across the board, like we talked about. And thank you for passing that resolution, that, that means a lot. I know we do it anyway, but it's nice to have, have it publicly backed by the commission. So, I think we're down, we just got another application from a certified officer who's gonna come over. A deputy, he's a police officer right now, I think we're gonna be down about four, four positions. And, and I'm, I'm thrilled about that. And the applications come in daily, I, I feel like it's a good thing. Um, you might get more now that you got a nicer guy coming in to be sheriff than me. So, but I, I did, I wanted to close out everything and, and say, you know, it's been an honor to be the, uh, to be the sheriff here, it really has, to represent y'all and we went through, man, you know, unprecedented challenges with, uh, the, the damn COVID thing. I'm not supposed to curse up here, uh, with the COVID thing. Unprecedented challenges and I, I, I was happy to, to work with y'all to get us through that. And we've done a lot of things, we've grown the Sheriff's Office. Matt's gonna take, take the ball and run with it and I'm gonna be there to support him. I think we've got everything worked out and we're, we're, we're satisfied where we're going and we're, we've got a great team at the Sheriff's Office, so y'all can count on us. Unfortunately, you're not getting rid of me, I'm gonna hang around for a while longer and, uh, so, continue to work, you won't, you won't see meaning here, you'll get, you'll get to see him.
Mr. Chairman. Mark, if you could help us and Matt, if you could help us with distribution on that, uh, resolution? We want to distribute that to the right people in, in the right places in the federal
Yes.
as well as other places in the state of New Mexico. And we might need some guidance on addresses and who to talk to and who to send that to so that we
Yes, sir.
so that we make the administration aware that we are here to, to support that effort.
The transition team has been in contact with me, President-elect Trump's transition team has been in contact with me. Um, as a matter of fact, we've, I've done a couple of endorsements for them already and I will make sure that they get a copy of the resolution. I will also make sure the National Sheriff's Association, uh, which I've got a couple more weeks left on the Executive Board there, I'll make sure that they have it and, uh, hopefully others will follow suit.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, thank y'all, it's been a good eight years, about twelve years really when you count.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mark.
Good morning. I, I do want to thank you guys for including the assessor's salary in, in your decision today, I really do appreciate that. Um, one of the things I wanted to let you guys know is, uh, back in November when we voted, uh, there was two amendments that were, that concerned the veterans. And, uh, right now, we don't really know when that's going to go into effect because it has to go through legislation, but we've had several veterans come to our office wanting to know when that's going to take place and all we can tell them right now is that we're waiting on legislation to, uh, go through all of that and let us know when it's gonna take effect. I figured it's probably gonna be 2026. Uh, for one thing, we have to get our CAMA system ready to be able to take those percentages that the disabled veterans will have. And, um, also, the, uh, right now, they're getting a four thousand exemption for those that are not disabled and it's going to go to ten thousand. And so, um, and I will have, I think, information for you after the first of the year, after I go through, uh, our affiliate meeting in January to kind of give you more information on that and what it will do to our values on upping that exemption from four thousand to ten thousand. Okay?
All right.
All right, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ms. Roberta.
I just wanted to come up here and just say thank you to all the outgoing elected officials, Commissioner Beard. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you in two different capacities, all your wisdom that you brought to the board, um, and all your support that you've, that you've given, not only to myself but to everyone. And, um, Commissioner Henry, um, thank you for everything you've done, it's been a great eight years, enjoyed working with you and, um, I just fully respect, um, always being willing to hear both sides of every story and having open minds but still standing your ground, so I just really appreciate that. And, um, Commissioner Cordova, look forward to working with you still. Um, Sheriff Mark Cage, um, same with you as well, it's been a bumpy wild ride with you, but I fully respect you. It's been great. And to Lori as well too, you know, I work very close with the Treasures Office, she's been a great treasurer and, um, glad to see that she's still gonna be here and look forward to working with Ms. Patsy, so just wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Lori.
Open the door again.
Any others? We'll move into County Manager comments.
Would you say, um, you just, you guys have a great team here? You're, uh, you're all great public servants. I've enjoyed working with every one of you. It's been a great pleasure for me and I, I really feel confident that the decisions you've made about the future leadership of the county are great. And, uh, I think Eddie County is onward and upward, so appreciate the chance you guys gave me to, to work with you, it's been a real pleasure. And this team that you've put together, I mean, you have no idea the quality of, I mean, these are high, highly skilled, highly quality, high-quality people. Team here in, in Eddie County is just phenomenal.
Thank you, Steve. All right, we will move into Commissioner comments. Commissioner Beard?
I'm not sure how to follow that. Uh, I concur with everything you just said. It's been a pleasure, I've enjoyed the last four years tremendously. I, uh, I'm gonna miss this place, I truly am, it's been, it's been a pleasure working with, I think, maybe the best county in the state of New Mexico. I mean, we get things done around here. Not to forget that we pretty much fund the rest of the state. I send our next-door neighbors over there. It's been a good ride, I appreciate everybody and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry?
All right.
You have more time.
A little more time, a lot of the same things, right? I can't thank you all enough, um, you know, I didn't know how it felt today and, and it is a weird feeling because I have loved being an Eddie County Commissioner, I truly have. Um, the folks I get to work with every day, the things that we've got accomplished and just looking at the last eight years, you know, nine years ago, when my wife and I started talking about running, uh, this was obviously my first official elected position, I mean, it's a lot different than high school president, so it took a little more discussion, uh, on, on the thought process, but, uh, you know, I couldn't do it without my wife and my family backing me up every single day and supporting me on all these decisions. And so, nine years ago, when we started that discussion, uh, I don't think we knew what kind of journey we were gonna get on, um, but it's been an absolutely incredible one. Um, the first two years were, uh, interesting, um, for me. I, I mean, I can remember our budget wasn't quite as fun to look at at that time. Uh, we had a lot more discussion on trying to find dollars here and there just to make things work. Um, and now we have the budget that we do that obviously makes our lives a little easier. Um, so, congratulations to y'all and hopefully that continues because it has for a long time for us, so. Um, but I think we use that money wisely. Um, I've been proud of, of the way the Commission and the way the other elected officials, um, department heads make sure that we don't just go spend wildly, uh, we make sure everything we do is actually impactful to the folks that we have been elected to serve, um, in, in, in so many different ways. And so, um, I don't want to get too long-winded or anything else, so I can't thank y'all enough. It has been, it's been such a wonderful, uh, joy to, to come here. It, it'll be, it'll be nice to not have to do the radio so often, um, so someone else can have to do that. I know Phil's looking excited, you know, Phil Haley, uh, that'll be fun for y'all, so. But, thank y'all, um, thank you so much for this, I, I, and I look forward to continuing to serve. Um, obviously, we're, we've got new roles, um, that we're gonna be taking and so, uh, this'll come in super handy in Santa Fe, I love that y'all put, for those that didn't see it, it does have the bulldog on it, which it should, because I think we've tried to represent that very well, um, represent RTG very well on the Commission. Um, so excited to go continuing my service, uh, so anytime, I won't just show up because it's now y'all's, y'all's show. Uh, but as a representative, if you ever need anything from me, please reach out and, and we'll work together and do what we can, so continuing that, continuing that work is, is what we would like to do, so, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Carlson?
I just want to say, guys, I've enjoyed serving with you. John, I think when we got on, when I started six years ago, I think we've brought the county a long way and, uh, a large part of that's due to you and I think that we haven't always agreed on a lot, some, some of the issues, but, but I've always respected your opinion on things and, and hopefully you're going to go up there and, and you're gonna represent us and I know you will, uh, with the same, uh, passion that you've represented Eddie County here on the Commission. And so, uh, and I look forward to coming up there and, and explaining our problems of Eddie County to you and I think that you're gonna do a great job and I appreciate that. Fred, you've been great since you've been on here. Uh, we've worked together on several issues, haven't always agreed, but that's part of the Commission. That's what makes this Commission great, is we don't always have to agree, but we always want to do the best for Eddie County and I think that every Commissioner on this Commission has that attitude and that passion. And I think that that's what, that's the reason why Eddie County is where it is today and we're gonna keep moving forward. We've got great elected officials, we've had great elected officials with Mark and, and we've got a great new sheriff coming on and so, I think that we're gonna keep supporting them and doing what's good for them because they're the ones that are out there putting their butts on the line every day. And the least we can do is make sure they're the best trained, best equipped and have whatever they need from this position. And so, thank you for your service and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cordova?
Well, first off, I want to thank Carolyn, the ICP, for getting me set up by phone today. I, I sure didn't want to miss it and I, I wish I could be there in person to congratulate and thank Fred and, and John. Um, you know, it's been an honor working with a couple of you and our other outgoing officials, Lori, um, and everyone else. Um, I respect you all so much and you've taught me a great deal about what being a, a good Commissioner is, you know, listening to the constituents, um, and as Ernie said, you know, doing what's right. And I just greatly respect that about each one of you. And I wish you the very best, Fred, and your next chapter and the same for you, John, representing us at the state level. Um, I guess this will be the last part that I talk to the majority of you before Christmas and New Year, so I wish you all a very happy holiday. And, um, I, I'm very excited about beginning another term in Eddie County, I think it's a very exciting time and I can't wait to see what the next four years hold, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll take a quick pause from the thank yous and I'm gonna talk about something a little different and we'll go back to those. On December fifth, we had the Ignite launch, uh, we talked about it at the last meeting. It's a program that I'm extremely grateful for the efforts of Mark, Sheriff Cage, and the Warden to bring this into Eddie County. We're one of twenty programs like this in the United States, we're the only one in New Mexico. Um, the sheriff had the foresight to look at this and bring this to our community. For those that don't know or understand what it is, it allows people that are in our jail, people that have made mistakes, a chance to better themselves, so when they get out of jail, they don't go back. It allows them to get a, get a GD, learn a skill or a trade, so they can come out and be a productive member of society. And this is something that the Warden is passionate about, the sheriff was passionate about, and it's a program that I think's really going to benefit our community, so thank you guys for that, I wanted to highlight that. I'm excited for the incoming officials, I think we had a good election, I'm excited to work along with Phil, Haley, Ms. Patsy, um, and Matt as well, thank you guys for stepping up. To put yourselves in this position, um, Lori, thank you for, is she still here? What you've done and thank you for continuing to stay here after you leave. Sheriff, the last eight years, what you've done in this county has really been appreciated. Goes without saying that the county's grateful for all that you've accomplished for us and look forward to having you here for however long you decide to stay. Fred, thank you for the guidance, the wisdom, everything that you've shared with me over the past two years and before that and other, other capacities, I really do appreciate it. I, I take our, our conversations and the words of wisdom that you've given me seriously and I truly do appreciate it. John, same with you. Not knowing you before I came in, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, getting to work alongside with you. You've been a person that I've bounced a lot of ideas off of and I hope that that can continue. I really do appreciate, uh, you being there as a support system through a lot of this stuff and guiding me through this as I didn't have any experience navigating political things, so I really do appreciate it. And then lastly, I want to thank Steve for coming in and stepping up and filling an interim role so we could find, take our time to find a, the right replacement, um, to be the County Manager. We pulled Steve out of retirement, paid him nothing and, uh, he, he
Which is exactly what I was worth.
You might have been the most overpaid County Manager. In all seriousness, thank you for, for what you've done and for, um, keeping the ship on its course through this time and during the interim period. Truly are grateful for, for everything that you've done, for the advice, the wisdom that you've imparted in all of us, thank you. I guess with that, guys, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll see you next year.